You guys, welcome. Thank you so much for coming out for the budget conversation. And what I would love to do since we're small group is go around and just introduce so we end up knowing everybody knows who's here and what school you're from and all of that. So let's start with Michelle.
I'm Michelle Arntz. I have a child at Riggler and a child at Beaumont. And I am the President Council PTA Section Vice President for the Madison Cluster.
I'm Jim Holstein. I have two kids, second grade and fifth grade at Jason Lee and the director at the PTA.
I'm April Epperson and I'm the PTA Vice President over at Jason Lee and I have a fourth grader and then a three year old.
I'm Shree Dulles. I'm the Senior Director for Counting and Payroll for Portland Public Schools.
Hi, I'm Tang Li. I'm an Vietnamese interpreter.
I'm Dona Chian, a Chinese Mandarin interpreter.
And I'm Olga Valakrova. I'm a Russian interpreter.
My name's Maria Thomas and I've got a student at Madison. She's a junior. And I have a graduate from the school that's going to Lewis and Clark now.
Cool. I'm a parent at Madison as well, same kids and I'm a PTA as well, just as a member. I'll wait. You told me I haven't signed up yet.
I'm Kristen and I have a third grader and a fifth grader at Vernon.
I'm Tanya and I have a fifth grader and first grader at Vernon.
I'm Patriot Callen, Principal here at Madison. Thank you for hosting us.
I'm Jane Rosenstein and I have a senior here at Madison and I'm the President this year of the PTSA.
Tom Curler and I'm on the School Board.
Ruth Atkins, also School Board Member.
I'm Brian Rupp, Madison parent of one junior and next year a freshman and a PTA member.
Hi, John Isaacs. I'm the Chief Communications Editor for PPS.
And you're taking notes today?
Yes.
Great, you're great. And Carol Smith Superintendent and cameraman.
Tony Preasey, cameraman.
Okay, so what I was gonna do is walk you through, we just did a presentation to the Board the other night about where we are in the budget process and kind of what's on the table so far. And then I wanted to give you an update on where we are with state funding because that's the huge unknown factor that's a moving target at the moment. So I'll just tell you what we know at this moment and then open it up and we'll do just conversation about like what's in your head and what you want to see or either questions or things you want us to be considering. So, and I'm gonna probably just try and do this as down, driven and dirty as I can but to give you a sense of what's on the table so far. So, what we're doing at the beginning, we are doing a series of town halls. So we start with one before the budget at the front end that was just an open dialogue. That was the first one. I presented a school staffing plan to the Board and we now do the budget in two parts. Staffing first because we can then punch go on school staffing and we're out hiring, which is really important that we're out early. The putting together the rest of the budget takes a little bit longer and that's what some of the rest of the dialogue is. So I present the full budget on March 31st. So like we just started doing this in the last couple of years that we're not waiting for the whole budget in order to say go on school staffing. So that just came to the Board on the 9th and we actually started school staffing on the 10th. So we're out a week earlier than last year but five weeks earlier than we were the year before that. So big deal in terms of our being able to do our internal staffing moves but then be out in the market early and trying to attract our, you know, the best talent at the front end as opposed to we were always the last. So a big deal for that one. We then do, I'm out doing listening sessions, which is one of these with the Board able to hear what the dialogue is. I then do a proposed budget and budget message on the 31st. And then the Board is out listening and I'm out listening too, but it's then at their court. So they're taking the feedback and they would do adjustments from there. So that's the process that we're in.
Yeah, you can do left and right arrow.
So state funding update, this is the, we work collaboratively between COSA, which is the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators, OEA, which is the Oregon Education Association, so teachers unions, the Oregon School Board Association, STAND, CHOC Board, so all the educational advocacy groups. PTA, like we try and get all the voices who are the education advocates in the legislature to put together a picture that is really clear about the different levels of funding and what happens at those levels so that we don't have 197 districts all doing a different story that the legislators could make no sense of. We've tried to say, okay, how do we put this together in a picture that they understand? Here's what holds us at current service levels. Here's where we're cutting. Here's where we're investing. So, right now what this is, the 7.5 billion is the number we've been saying holds us at current service levels pretty comparably across all 197 districts. So that's a give or take a little bit depending on where you are and allows us to implement full day kindergarten, which this year theoretically the state is now funding full day K rather than only half day K. So the 7.5 number is the number we're advocating for. The number we're at right now is 7.235. So the co-chair, first the Governor does a budget, then the co-chairs do a budget that's generally a little bit higher. Then we're in a negotiation and advocacy period where you try, where we're trying to get the number up. But the state has to put together a budget for public safety, health and human services, and education. Those are their three big things. So they really are hearing from all the sectors and then trying to balance who gets what money. And, and so we've got huge advocacy efforts down there trying to make sure that education gets, at least holds steady and doesn't go backwards. And the biennium, so we're deciding for two years, the budget over the next two years. The 7.875 number is what we've said is our, we're investing and we're on a glide path towards the quality education model. You guys know what this is. The state put together a group to say, what would it actually take, take the state of Oregon to truly fund the outcomes we're looking for that we say we want? And so they did a quality education model that actually really took it down to the classroom level. Here's the staffing you'd need in your schools. Here's what it would take for us to actually get, I think it's 90% of our kids to the goals that we've set for ourselves. And we're like $2 billion short of where, what that number is. So the 7.8 represents a glide path. And I'm gonna take a moment and ask a few people to introduce yourselves. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Donna Seigman and I have two children, Madison, ninth and eleventh grade.
Great, thanks for being here.
My name's Kelly McDonald and I'm on the PTA volunteer coordinator and I have a junior daughter and an incoming freshman daughter.
Great, and we just started.
My name is Liz and I have a son who's a ninth grader here at Madison.
Awesome, you guys, thank you for being here. Okay, so this is our, like what the picture is, we're right now at the low end of this.
Or rather legislators are telling us that we're at the low end. So that's where all of us can step in and tell them it needs to be a different story.
Okay, so this one, we're advocating for at least the 7.5 and we've been like full on down testifying, meeting with Tina Kotek and doing our, like here's what happens if we're not at 7.5. All the districts are, okay? But this one, current service level and full day K. We're at the 7.235 for PPS, what this means, and we're in a little bit different circumstance than a lot of other districts. So we're really lucky. We have our local option. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about what that means. But, but even for us, even having the local option, it's more than $120 less per kid than we have in the current biennium. So we go down in terms of what we get per student. And it's $13 million short of being able to implement full day K without having to then pull from other grade levels to fully fund kindergarteners. And we already have 98% of our kids in full day K, except what we do right now is we fund it with Title I. So Title I schools, we fund their full day K with Title dollars. Schools that are not Title can opt for a full day program with tuition. So we charge parent tuition. We will no longer be able to charge parent tuition, so we need to fully fund whatever it is, which means we just do a smaller amount per kid across the whole K-12 in order to do full day K. So if we're not fully, if we're not actually funded by the state to do it. So, big deal for us that that's the case. And are you tracking what I'm saying there? Does that make sense? What I'm saying, okay. The other thing for us in terms of holding current service levels, we've got some wraparound services that have been funded by grants. So like High School Graduation Initiative, we did an early warning system that have been attendance. Folks really working to get kids to attend. And I'll pause again and let you introduce yourself. Hi.
Oh.
We're just welcoming people as you come in.
I'm Carl. I have two boys in the public school, one in Grant, one in Beaumont.
Awesome, thanks for being here. So if we were really truly saying we're holding current service levels and services for kids don't go away, we would move those grant-funded services over to the general fund and keep continuity of service for kids so that they don't fill the gap in the folks that have been working with them. We also have this year Multnomah County saying they will fund, match us for adding, it would be four mental health, qualified mental health professionals, which we've been saying we need desperately. They would fund two if we will fund two, right? So we would want to be able to say yes to that. If we don't put money in, they don't put money in. And also to help us fund and continue to build on attendance, caseworkers who follow up with kids who are not attending. Huge deal in terms of like how are we getting out of council kids is getting them here. So, and we're really looking with lower grades to build attendance patterns. So we would want to be able to say yes to that. Those things count on us having a higher level of funding in order to be able to, be able to keep them in and keep those current service levels. Okay, the other things that I would just say briefly end up being like on the list of if we get the higher level of funding. We keep moving forward with our CTE expansion. We've been really working over the last couple of budgets to build hands-on experiences and CTE programming back into our high schools. Support for our emerging bilingual students. And we're doing more supported services to do inclusion of our special education students where we want them in mainstream environments but you need the supports to come with that. School safety, so increasing our, our campus monitors. We have an opportunity to add AVID, which is a, like study skills and prepares and supports students to be able to take advanced coursework. And we have Nike and Miller Foundation offering up grant funding. We've been accepted to be able to do it, but we've got to be able to pay for the teachers to go, pay for their time while they're in the training, which is a chunk of money. And we have a bunch of costs that would be our costs, again, a match. So in order to say yes to the grants that we're getting, we need to have dollars that we can then put towards those. This is something, we've got three high schools already. We'd be able to add it to three more. We've got it built down into three of the clusters, into the middle grades. We'd be able to add more middle grades. So something we really want to be able to do. Again, technology adds and services for early learners, all are part of the part two of the budget. Okay, so the framework we are using, and hi, I'm gonna keep pausing every time somebody new comes in to let you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Grace Drew. I'm a mom of a fourth grader at Roseway Heights.
Awesome, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Antonio Lopez, Assistant Superintendent for the Office of School Performance.
Awesome, thank you for being here. Okay, budget framework, and I'm gonna do this one pretty quickly because you've probably seen this stuff before, so I'm not gonna go in depth. But I want you to know, we have like guiding documents and guiding frameworks that drive decision-making when we're making decisions about scarce resources. So, we have our vision, which is equity and excellence. Every student, every teacher and every school succeeding. Our mission, that's every student by name, prepared for college career and participation as an active community member regardless of race or class. We have an overall organizational framework that does our values across the top. The key things we're looking at, effective educators, rigorous relevant programs for all, so access to that for every kid in the district, that we're providing individual student supports and differentiating for individual kids' needs to have them access core program, collaborating with families and communities, and then underneath, modernizing our infrastructure. So this was about passing our bond and having a stable operating model, which is all about, we advocate to get the dollars we need in order to offer what we do to our kids. This one is really school by school. What are the things we know are effective practices that we're getting the kind of outcomes we're looking for for kids? And so these are the things we're saying we want to see present in each one of our schools. So this drives school level capacity that we're trying to build. And you see equity at the core of all of these. And then the milestones was essentially something we started, actually back when I first started as superintendent, to say, okay, how are we measuring our success as a district? And we picked key transition moments in a student's journey through PPS where, that are predictive of success at the next level. So, key, so as you're entering first grade, ready to read, third grade, reading to learn. Middle years that you're ready for high school, which was really about attendance and taking and passing algebra. Not, not failing your OPEX tests, which were the thing at the time. And actually, we were using writing as a key indicator in terms of what predicts success in college. Entering 10th grade on track to graduate, which means you've got the credits as you enter, the full amount of credits as you enter 10th grade, which predicts you're five times more likely to graduate on time as a four-year graduate. And then finally graduating, ready for college career. Okay, we now have zoomed in on three priorities that for the next three years. We're saying we want to have 100% of our third graders reading by the time they exit third grade, which means it changes the whole rest of the opportunities available to them and the rest of the time they're with us. So if we focus energy there, high value in terms of an experience for a kid in terms of being able to, again, take advantage of everything else we've got to offer while they're with us. Second one, reducing exclusionary discipline. So we want to reduce the amount of time that we're having kids sent away from school as a disciplinary action. So how do we develop more repertoire internally to have kids be able to take responsibility for their actions and not be sent away as the way that we're doing discipline? We want to reduce our disproportionality by 50% and reduce that exclusion overall by 50%. So it's a big, it's a big target. And then finally accelerating the trajectory of the increase in our four and five year graduation rate, which we have done a 17% increase in our four-year graduation rate over the last six years. Big increase. Still not high enough. Okay, budget assumptions, like I said, 7.5 billion we're going for. Now the big thing is different for Portland. We have a local option. Not every district has the ability to do this. And for Portland, we renewed it. And what we were able to do when we just renewed it is recapture money that was, for the same tax rate, was previously diverted to urban renewal. It brought back another $4 million to PPS. We've also had an increase in assessed value on property and compression is unwinding, which is a relationship between the assessed value and I don't, I cannot explain it to you apparently, so I'm not even gonna try. But, three factors that mean we actually have a chunk of money that is not available to other districts that we've committed to voters will be spent on teachers. So a bunch of the staffing I'm gonna talk to you about, we get to do because of that, okay? Regardless of what happens over here with the state, the state dollars. And then finally, the Board has indicated we will, we will plan for maintaining a 4.5% contingency. So hold that back, that's an unplanned contingency. We're working at holding current levels of service for students, families and schools. The three priorities, strengthening our capacity at schools overall and then strengthening our capacity to support schools. So that's core, what are we trying to do in the budget? Okay, now school staffing, and I'm gonna, this is where I'm gonna zip by a bunch of stuff. We, in the last two years have really said, one, that we're gonna be willing to differentiate resources. So we're not just going strictly by number of kids in a school. We're also gonna go by need of kid and need of school, that you may get a little deeper pot of resource if, you know, for certain factors that indicate higher need of individual students. And then secondly, we're trying to really hold resources in place long enough to see if strategies work as opposed to that you reinvent it every year. We're trying to do, how long does it take for something to actually, you know, that it worked? So how do we hold steady with the things that we've done? So this is, just so you know, overarching, that's what we're trying to do. We have an equity formula that will, this will be the third year that we've applied it, which is one of the ways we're differentiating. I'll do a little more detail in a minute. We also do, like we'll do the formula by, by numbers of kids, but then we'll also do what we call non-formula ads for certain circumstances. Like you've got a split campus, so you need a different, you know, depth of administrators in order to manage the two campuses. You need programs like CTE that require a different kind of staffing ratio. Situations like for schools that are in our bond implementation where they are both building a building, moving to a new building and running their current program, that they need a little different depth of staff and minimizing disruption. So those kinds of considerations happen on a school-to-school basis, but we have the capacity to add a little bit more. And then finally, we hold a small pool of FTE that we can respond to individual situations, including who shows up for kindergarten in the fall that's different than what we predicted, because we can't tell that one. So, and we want to be able to respond quickly once we know we've got a whole nother class of kindergarteners that we couldn't tell were gonna show up. The equity allocation, 4% of it is based on poverty. The other 4% is based on what we call historically combined underserved. So special ed, ELL, poverty, and four historically underserved racial groups. And what happens, we hold that, those percentages back and then reallocate it to schools with these factors. So you get, again, a little depth, more depth of adults. This is the order it goes in. So you get your assigned by size and your equity allocation, then school-wide support principal, counselor, secretary, librarian, those kinds of folks that come in in a different method. And then finally, the non-formula FTE. Okay, so for PPS, in the coming year, we're expecting 585 more kids, which adds another 33 FTE that will be coming our way that we get to allocate. And the local option, 140 teachers. So again, you guys, I'm gonna just say, this makes our messaging with the state a little more nuanced because we have the unique opportunity, because of the local option, to add stuff. We've got a number of other districts that are, if we stay at this funding level, we'll cut days and they will cut staff. So, we've been really clear about the combination of things that will happen for PPS. Early literacy, we're looking at adding educational assistance support in kindergarten, so 21.5 FTE in our, if you have 50% or more combined underserved kids, that we'd add another point, this .5 educational assistant. We've got in our targeted, our folks in priority schools, eight of them, that we would add targeted early literacy support. We added three of these people in this year. This would add eight more of these folks that can both work directly with kids and with teachers to increase the school's capacity to focus on reading and literacy. So the big one. For exclusionary discipline, we're looking at counselors as being the, really the big ad. Over the last couple of budgets, we've gone, and at the high school level, we have gone from having 400 to 1 ratio to a 350 to 1 ratio to a 300 to 1 ratio. We'll, we'll hold that, and that was a big deal. I mean, that's a really, whatever, really good progress in terms of having kids really able to access their counselors. And we've also added over the last couple of budgets and maintained career coordinators on each one of the high school campuses, which then are a real specific add to the counseling and career advising capacity. Now we're really focused on our early grades. This year, we added counseling capacity to every school. So we still had, this year, last year, we had, I think, like 10 schools that still had no counselor. This year, we got to fractional counselors at every school. This budget, what we're trying to do is get to a minimum of a full-time counselor at every elementary, K-8 and middle school, but then using a 400 to 1 ratio to allocate above that, but that nobody would have less than a full counselor. So you just get, we're trying to get, make progress in building systemically our capacity back. And then the EA support, again, counts, we believe will impact this goal as well in terms of exclusionary discipline for K-2. And it's one of the places we're really focused at not sending kids away and expelling or suspending them when they're K-2. Can we hang on to those kids? Having an EA in those classrooms, we think will make a difference. High school graduation, we're looking at increasing the elective offerings at middle grades. In our K-8s and middle schools, we're looking in the K-8s at adding a .5. And in the middle schools, adding 8.2. If in fact, as a K-8, you know, you do not have arts offerings currently, we're gonna put that as the highest priority guidance that we want you to add art capacity. We just added all these arts teachers in our elementaries. We've got arts at the high schools. We've got a gap in some of our middle grades in terms of building a articulated arts kind of offering for kids. So we want to strengthen that. I mentioned AVID. If, there are some of the schools that are adding AVID, so we'd ask them if you're, if you're one of those schools, prioritize that, that you've got the staff to be able to do it. And if you are neither one of those, we're asking you to prioritize college and career readiness. Then in the high schools, we're adding, for each of the high schools, 1.5 FTE that either allows them to add AVID or another college and career readiness kind of capacity. And then finally, high school teachers, another 20. So we're increasing our offerings. And again, still trying to, you've heard a lot of talk about full day for high school kids. We're really trying to give the opportunity for kids to have a full day. But again, increasing elective offerings, so it's not like take 8 million AP or IB classes. Take a balanced load that you can manage, but, but utilize the full day that's available to you. Athletics, and again, this is another one, we've been working over the last couple of budgets to build back. And we've been building middle school programming and adding back, you know, coaches, trainers, transportation. This adds what right now are halftime athletic director allocations in the high schools, increasing them to full-time, but then asking them to really coordinate the athletics for the cluster so that they're part of, like again, building articulation and theater of athletic programming for the high school. Outdoor school, this is a different part of the budget. We're looking at using our, our resolution dollars through the Multnomah Education Service District to go back, get ourselves back to the full week of outdoor school programming. And I want to make this visible because this is usually hugely of the interest to people because people have come up through the outdoor school system and we kept it alive by keeping the three days, but people are just like anxious and eager to get back to the full week. So we intend to do that this year. And then strengthening overall school capacity, we're again, trying to establish a minimum for school secretaries. That you don't have any less than two full-time secretaries in any school regardless of size. So we still have schools with fractional secretarial support, totally matters. This is kind of core of what keeps everything coming in a school. So we're looking to try and get us up to, two full-time in every school. And then educational assistant and parent educator substitutes, five of each. That gives us more capacity when we've got people gone, that we've got trained people to be able to fill in. And that is it. So that's the staffing thing. So what I will say to you, the stuff that I just showed you, we already punched go. Gave schools all have, how did that get allocated out to the schools? They're working with their senior directors right now on how they implement it and, and negotiating if they don't have enough to offer core program. They're coming back and making their asks of, I need this in order to really get there. So that's all in motion. And regardless of what happens with the state, we're going forward on that unless they go less than the 7.235. The 7.235, we're going full blast advocating for getting to the 7.5 billion. The 7.235, if that's what we get, you kind of have seen, kind of what you see is what you get. We're not in a whole lot of, adding a whole lot of other stuff, although I'll probably do some of the continuity of service things and I'll come back to the Board and ask them to go down to 3.5% in reserves in order to hold steady on some of the things that we just talked about. So I'll ask the Board to cut further into reserves. So, conversation for right now is really about the second half of the budget. We very well, you know, again, our advocacy could pay off between here and the end of the year. We could end at a higher number. And I'm building the, what's the plan that we would do if we get there? So just to say the stuff that you tell me tonight and what you're thinking about, what you want to see in there, we'll go on that kind of a list of, okay, if we get to do more stuff, what is it that we care about that we want to build? So, now I turn it over to you to talk, and John's taking notes. I'm gonna listen and hear what it is that you either want to ask about or say to me that you're interested in seeing happen in the budget.
The eight FTE positions, are those gonna be reading specialists or what will they?
The intent is for them to be reading specialists, yeah.
So they'll be coaches and working directors?
Coaches, and we're not saying like at least school to school.
Right.
If they're more focused on individual work with kids or, the intent is for them to increase the reading construction capacity at each school. We also just added in our one-time budget, more dyslexic training and dyslexia for our early elementary grade teachers. So like we're actually working to just bolster capacity for individual schools to do reading instruction.
Are they the same eight that you added or that you added?
Are they the same eight that you added, that you added this year?
No, we added three earlier, and then this is another eight. I think there's also some classified staff to be added, maybe that we were referring to.
I don't know. We got a librarian, Scott got a librarian or a reading specialist.
We added three reading specialists and three librarians.
Okay.
So we did two different, we did six, but it was two different things. So we added three librarians and three.
So those six, this is a lot of details, but those six that you added this year are staying, and then you're doing an eight.
Exactly.
And that's going to be the same school?
No. No, no, no. We're doing, so like, part of the effort here on all of these, so we've added, we added a number of classified staff, and we added, we added 180 new teaching positions in the year we're in right now. We're working to hold steady on all of those and continue to build. So when I'm saying the thing about can we keep things, can we keep moving forward? That's what we're working to do, so.
I know.
Okay, we have a ton of new people who just walked in that we're going to pause and do introductions of new folks who just came in.
Oh, Mary Welch, I have a son who's been through PPS here in the neighborhood, and now he's a junior here at Madison.
I'm a school teacher, fifth grader, at Riggler.
Hi.
Hi. Miss Luckin, and I'm also a parent of a student here at Madison.
Great. Bye, you guys. Thanks for coming.
Bye.
See ya. So yes, we're, capacity already there, keeping it. The things that would be, like, we just did a batch of one-time ads, but they weren't people in whatever last month. They were like musical instruments and, I mean, they were stuff. And we really worked to not do people in a one-time ad, but just do, you know, library books, musical instruments, I can't remember what the whole list was, but we were careful to do that. The other things, we're working on people being, keep going.
I'm really into adding the people, the teachers, but you know I'm really panicked about the substitute pool. And I know he's panicked about the substitute pool because I saw you. And so I'm thinking next year, you're going to take even more teachers out of the substitute pool, and the pool will be empty.
So here's what I'll tell you, the other factor in this one, yeah, it's been, here's where we've got multiple factors on the substitute pool. This was Tom's question in the board meeting. We have, that we hired so many new, we hired 500 teachers last year. So 180 were new positions, but it was also a lot of people who retired. We had more retirements last year because of coming out of the recession, so people that hung on passed when they would have retired, that did when they had the opportunity. So we had a huge number of hires. We also had a new healthcare law go into effect that meant you had to wait for six months before you, when you end retire, when you retire, you have to wait six months before you can go in our subpool. So we've been in this waiting period with a bunch of people who want to be in our subpool who couldn't be in it, that were now, I believe, out of. Are we out of it?
Yes.
Yes?
We had 26 weeks.
So we have, like, so that was another factor. And then the other one is, we have numbers of people who go in our subpool who then say, I don't want to work Fridays, I don't want to work Mondays, I don't want to work Fridays, I'll only work at these two schools. So you've got a bunch of like conditional capacity in there that has made it really complex. So we're, we're working to grow the pool. And we just have a new wave of people who went into it who are our retired teachers who we want in there. But we also want it as a place that people come in, become familiar with PPS, and then we hire you. So we want all of those people in that pool. We also have them. And I will say, our H, one of our HR directors gets on the phone, like, today she was marching around, she's like, look at all these, okay, I'm calling and making sure they really need this stuff. Anyway, I'm just going to say, it's been high management of the, like, wherever we really have access. I know.
There's like, there'd be up to 30 unfilled positions, and our school gets like three of those, and we're.
Here's the other impactor. People who call late for their subs. So if you call the day before, a bunch of the subs have already taken jobs in other districts. So a lot of subs serve in multiple districts. People, and we had 150 requests for subs for tomorrow that come in today. Odds are, we're going to have low odds of getting them. So just to say, like, that's the other one that we can impact, is people doing, for the things you can plan for, plan for them and don't do it the day before. Like, that's an impactor that you can feedback in your, but it's not, we have the dollars available to be hiring them, we don't have to, yeah.
Curious about the priorities you identified that are related to graduation and completion. What are the key drivers of low, this low graduation rate we have here and in Oregon that you're trying to address with those priorities?
Oh, so I would say, all of the things that we've prioritized directly relate to graduation rate. And so the third grade reading, I'm going to say, is a huge, is a huge predictor of graduation if you've got kids who are able to absorb content. And we're trying to impact that one all the way from the time you come into the system. How are we focused on having you able to read and absorb content?
And is that because, is that because if that isn't the case, then you have students who feel demoralized or otherwise sort of alienated?
You fall behind. I'm just going to say, though, then the gap starts, like, our gap starts really early and it just travels. So the degree to which we can close that here at the beginning, which is part of the attendance in kindergarten, is a huge indicator. And actually, having full-day K, I think, will be an impactor statewide because I think the half-day K thing does more of a statement to families that it's kind of optional, whether you come or not. Whereas full-day K, we're really programming for you and have it, like, we're doing attendance, people who are focused on attendance and trying to build good attendance habits early, big deal. Exclusionary discipline has a huge correlation too. Like, if you have been, never had an exclusionary incident, you're like, whatever, 70% on-time graduation rate. Every incident you have reduces your odds of graduating on time, like significantly. So, and we've got, I actually, on the 31st, I'm going to do much more of that kind of data of ours over time to show you what's happened for us over time. We think adding a bunch of the high engagement classes, like, part of what's gone out of PPS over the years of budget cutting, we've lost art, we've lost sports, we've lost CTE, we've lost a lot of the hands-on stuff. And I will say, the degree to which you hear increased focus on accountability and testing has a direct relationship to how time is spent in school, and it's decreased the amount of stuff that ends up being high interest for kids, that is what holds you in school or pulls you to school. So I think you've got some of that kind of dynamic going on.
I've got a picture of them coming, I mean, just that Madison's one of our awesome sources.
Madison has totally rocked, yeah. Go ahead, talk about what you guys have done there. Because you, our biggest graduation gain has been at Madison. So I'm just going to say, year over year, here, so, yeah.
I think staff makes a really, has a big impact. I have teachers who are released to do very specific jobs within schools, whether it be professional development, a coordination of different kinds of programming. So that is really a staffing thing. I mean, if you're leaning on staffing and you have to have everybody in the classroom every minute, then you, you don't have the capacity to move work forward. So I think that's important. As something at the SIG, the grant, big grant we have gave us, and I'm just crossing my fingers that, you know, we don't have to pull back too much on that. For example, you know, we were able to hire a social services coordinator that really helps support students that need that additional social emotional support to be able to attend to academics. I have invested a lot in teachers working together, teachers collaborating together in the summer, during the school year. That all has a budget implication as well because that does not come free. So that's another thing that really has been grant-driven. I'm hoping as, hopefully, budgets get better going into the future, that we'll be able to think about how to fund those kinds of activities as well, which make a big difference. You know, when you have teachers looking at what's happening directly in their classrooms, how students are doing, and how they help support each other, and in impacting that in a positive way, I think then you can really move the building.
And we have great principal leadership, if we have in you, and, as well as great parent community support, which has just been awesome to see.
And biotech, I'm going to say, some of your programming where you've eat resources from everywhere to make things happen, like biotech. Oh, right. Harassed. Arrested. I mean, everything, I mean, it's truly.
Strong advocate.
But it's, but it's high-interest stuff for kids and really hands-on kind of learning experiences that they're really jazzed about, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I would definitely, well, to piggyback on to that, put my, you know, vote behind the, I don't know if there's any fluidity between the college and career readiness and the CTE FTE, but to focus some resources on the CTE programs here. And also, I know that the SIG grant is in the front of a lot of our minds since it's not here anymore, and we miss it, but to the degree that family involvement is a determinant in school success, I would just say, I mean, our school and our cluster can use support reaching out. I mean, I think tonight is a good example. We had four translators show up, and I have a hard time believing that no parent that speaks any of those languages would not be interested in being here, but we just really need help reaching out to those parents. So it may take some creativity, but whatever resources we can get.
Have you guys seen the Madison video?
Yeah.
It's totally cool.
Well, I have a question about that. Jefferson Cluster was the same thing. I mean, it's kind of always this way, it's kind of the way that it is. And I've been thinking a lot about the, the we thinking, we, meaning WE. And how do we get more people engaged? And I just, I was thinking about this earlier today. I don't know how you put that into a budget, or if you put, I mean, we have a community engagement person who seems to be extremely busy doing lots of things in his department, and almost too many things. But what, I think we need some real novel strategies and efforts put into empowering people, parents. And the only thing that, like, I feel is lacking sometimes is the, is communication. There's just not enough. And the only conduit that I find to be effective is through teachers. And so, I don't know, and then you have to have a strong relationship with your teachers, you know, the parent, the families do, and the school district does, and that line of communication is not that functional. And I don't know how you budget for that. It's not, I don't know if it's a budget thing, but just bringing, I was thinking about you and how much power you have, and I was like, you come into a room like this, and like, we have the power, but there's so many parents that aren't empowered, like, I feel, like, they don't. Somehow I've gained a lot of power as a parent, like, by doing what I do, and I'm really informed, and I still sometimes can't figure out what's going on. So, no, I don't, I don't have the solutions. That's what I said earlier today. If I had the solutions, I would run for school board. I don't know. But there's got to be, like, community building that people do somewhere that's really effective. And I don't know what, I don't know. That's all, I just wish that it wasn't the same old story where somehow we're having trouble reaching people.
I, I think sometimes what it takes is, you know, people who understand the bureaucracy and are engaged in the system of PTA or whatever, going out to cultural events. You know, I work for the Native American Rehab Association, and, you know, generally in healthcare, you have like this boundary. But if I go to one powwow, and even people who are my patients see me out there in the community, it's a huge trust builder, like, oh, you're actually, you know, willing to come to us. And, and so, but it takes connections with people who are active in cultural activities of that community to even know where to go.
And our community liaisons have some of those connections, like, they're in the school, but they're also in the community. And they're great, the ones that we have, I mean, they're so busy. It's like, they're, they're so busy.
And that's, that's who we pay for with our SIG grant.
And they're not getting accurate information necessarily either, like, they don't really know.
Like, what would be the information that you'd want them to know?
I don't know, when there's important, just like, important things about how, what your kid needs to be doing in school, and what's important for, like, we were trying to have a, a meeting on testing, and we couldn't even get that scheduled because it was a complicated political problem. And so the parents don't get it, it was supposed to be tonight. The parents don't even get the opportunity to even learn about state testing. We never had a state testing meeting in the school. We were going to have one, now we're not because it's too, like, oh, then we have, you know, it's just like, there's so many layers. Like, somehow it needs to be simpler, or, or, maybe it's more complex, but it's like, at least the, the dots are getting connected, and the stuff is happening. Like, people are showing up in schools for events like that because they heard about it on time and in advance, and then it actually isn't canceled. Oh, wait, is it happening or is it not happening? It's just so, it's like muddled. And I find that when the teacher says to the students, this is important, they listen, and then they go home and they say, hey, mom and dad, this is, this is important.
Well, that doesn't happen in high schools.
No. And so, sure, but, and the systems start early, and you get those kids engaged in kindergarten and connected to their school early because there's like clear flow of information and like follow-through. I don't know. It's just, it hasn't happened in all the time.
It depends on what stuff we're talking about, too. If we're talking school-based stuff that's really about what's individual school community, or you're talking district levels, you got layers.
Well, it all makes us together, it can't come together. Like, the testing thing is, it's, it's both.
Was this a, a school-based event that you were trying, that was trying to be organized, or was it a district thing trying to be organized? Don't know.
It was just, it was the district staff. It wasn't a PTA meeting, it was a.
The testing coordinator?
Yeah.
Here's, I'll tell you, so complexity, testing coordinator who's trying to actually implement.
Who's a teacher, right, yeah.
Now she's, oh, I don't know, is it your school?
Our school testing coordinator was trying to put this together for our family.
So our central one was being requested all over the district to come do informational things every night while she's trying to implement testing. And we kind of hit a point where she's like, okay, she doesn't have the capacity to do it.
No, well, this is the thing.
So that's part, you hit some of those things.
This is just one example, but it's a good example of, of something that.
But yours was a school-based thing, you were trying, was trying to get a lot of guys.
It was the school testing coordinator who said, God, we've never even talked to our parents about what this test is, and maybe we should have an informational meeting. And it was supported by the administration until it became a complicated political issue because we have to have both. So, I, I don't even know, you can ask Lisa knows.
I know, I was going to say. Yeah, good.
So communication is always important, you know, because there's, I mean, just looking at this presentation, I was like, gee, you got a tough job, people. But I was impressed, a while ago, we got a robo-call saying, your school may or may not be starting in two hours later or whatever. So you go to the website of the school, no information. Go to the website of the district, there is no information, but there was a robo-call. So at some level, they decided this was important across the board, but there was no information about it.
You should follow up.
So you have to call up the parents, talk to your kid and whatnot, figure out, well, is it or isn't it? You know? And it's just an issue of communication. I know that making websites that actually have updated information is a staffing issue. And it is the modern age, where do people go to find out information? They go online and find out.
So let me ask you this one. One of the things that's on, that is not on the list, but was one of our highest asks, was updating our website, cost $74,000. It's not, we prioritize services to kids, this is what we always do. Prioritize services to kids. How high would you rank updating our web, meaning modernizing different website that's searchable, that's, I mean, like, there's.
The PPS website?
We're on an ancient website, web platform.
The school-based website.
It would be the whole thing. It updates our entire thing.
I think communication to families is a direct service to students.
It is.
You're going to say, like, you guys telling me this in this forum right now makes a difference about whether or not I say, you know what? One of the biggest things I got out of the town halls, updating our website so it's on a platform.
It's embarrassing, I'm sorry.
You guys could, you guys could impact that right this minute, that's what I'm saying.
It's hugely important, number one. Number two, I work in that industry, and whoever told you it's going to cost $74,000 is wrong.
But they made a waterboard software once, didn't they? Same group?
Here's the thing, all of that is, Carol, all of that is templatized now, whether it's Squarepace or WordPress, all, you, you can create a very easily managed, beautiful website for not very much.
For the whole, for this.
You're talking for the whole district.
It's not just the website, it's a full integration of all of our communications tools, it comes with text alerts.
Sure.
What you want. So everybody in this room will be able to go in and customize the way you get alerts from the district. So if you're someone who only wants to get text messages and you don't want. John, my point is this, all that, that's all off-the-shelf stuff now.
John, my point is this, all that, that's all off-the-shelf stuff now.
You know, ten years ago, you would have had to develop all that. All of those gadgets exist.
Yes, this is one where we would be doing school wires.
It sounds like a small amount of money to me and you should buy it.
But I think it's a huge priority.
I'm, so I'm asking you, is this a priority to you guys?
It's a huge priority.
Comes up in our PTA meeting.
Do you think this is a huge priority? We can move where it is in our budget.
It comes up every meeting at our PTA meeting.
There has to be a, a person in the school that is assigned to. I, I volunteered last year. I don't do it this year. I was the one that updated our school website information and.
According to the district, not allowed.
I got trained in Red Dot. I know, I got trained in Red Dot and I got the sign by the principal and like I got permission to do it, right? And, but I don't have the content. Like I'm just the blind leading the blind. And it wasn't that great and I didn't do a very good job. But this, this, like who's supposed to do it? Whose job description is that? Is it the secretary? I thought it was the counselor at one point. I'm like, and it's basically nobody's job. So it needs to be.
Actually, John, you're on a one.
I know, we have that same problem over at Lee. It's like the website's there and we have the same complaints and nobody knows who's supposed to do it. Or then the people that they're like, oh, you're supposed to do it. They're like, well, I don't know how to do that. And, and I, so that's, but.
We're sorry to have to leave, Julia Caesar's about to die and we're supposed to be there. But Julia Caesar's is a woman in this production.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. So much.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, I'll take, I'll take this one as a high priority for this topic of conversation because we probably won't solve the individual school site who does the work on it. That's gonna be schools to school.
Extra secretaries.
But we are adding secretarial.
Because there's like so many fires, it gets like, it's not barely burning.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Did the Spanish translator read?
Yep.
Shoot.
They only stay for forty minutes.
Yeah, same way.
Shoot.
Oh, we can do it.
Oh, Tonya, thank you.
So the K eight, the dream, the reality. I'm, I'm worried because, you know, we have several buildings that, you know, have that under-enrolled, over-capacity duo. And Madison Cluster loses kids beginning in kindergarten because parents don't want their kids in a portable. They don't have, they know what the middle school programs are lacking. There is, you know, word on the street and speculation, are they gonna go return to a middle school model? And, and so, I mean, I don't even know how this conundrum could be approached through the budget. I mean, clearly, if you want robust programs, they have to be supported by extra FTE.
And you, were you here for the presentation? No.
Oh, no?
Okay, so the one thing we did do in the middle grades was add another point five to all the K eights for elective kind of. So that was one of the adds. This is like complex question, but that was.
But we were also talking before we started the evening just about that whole piece in, in relation to the boundary review and that we do need to say, okay, we need to figure out this configuration and program piece, the K eight in middle school.
Because every, you know, I think it's nice when a cluster has both. Like most clusters have some K eights plus a middle school model. My concern is that, you know, if our cluster were changed back to a middle school model, we'd lose every K eight, you know? And everybody else has a combo.
Or no K eights at all on the other side.
Oh, well, west side, that's like a whole different country.
Well, I mean, they're part of the system.
And so, yes, as part of the boundary review, we are taking a look at, in the go-forward, what's gonna make sense. Well, here's what I'll tell you, it's not a no-brainer. I don't, we will not end up with something that's a, okay, now we're gonna be all this. It'll still be a, a, some of both, I believe. And it is on the district to come back to the boundary review committee and say, here's what we believe makes sense. And we're doing some of the analysis right now. And we, part of our issue, we're now growing rather than declining enrollment, which is what was happening when the K decision was made. And you still need a critical mass of schools to go to a middle school model because you can't just do, okay, these three all go to, you like, you have to have a critical mass of kids to actually do a middle school.
I do recall, part of the, the reason was we did have middle schools that were not thriving. So I don't know if programming in the original configuration for our middle grade students when we're.
And we're looking at that as well. So we have been looking at what's the outcomes for kids in our K eights relative to what it was in the middle schools that they were previously served by.
Yeah, it would help the CTE things, I mean, because they're getting kids in that have, don't have, are not familiar with measuring things in centimeters or, or whatnot because they haven't had shop.
Not to mention band.
Band, yes.
Exactly.
And even, it goes up always university level. I have a friend that works at a property department and she's like, I was like, how's this affecting the incoming talent pool at the university level?
So two-parter, yes, we're tackling the overall question about configuration and in the immediate, in this budget, we're, we're adding staffing boost for the middle grades. And we added counseling for all, boost for all of the K fives and K eights. So we went to a minimum of a full-time counselor and then a four-hundred-to-one ratio. So those were the adds, both of which will impact the K eights. And we went to a minimum of a, two full-time secretaries at every school regardless of size. So there were a bunch of things that were like, wow. I know, see, like bunches of things that are, see, don't.
It wasn't bad, it was good.
I know. Because of local option. So like this is all because of local option. We're still in the limbo on state budget, but local option, I know. So, but, but incremental boosts that will be felt in the K eights in particular. Yeah.
So I have an easy question. What is CTE, and then I have another question.
Career technical education.
And so is that the same, when you talked about in the K eights adding the college or career readiness elective?
You know, it's, so there's some career readiness kinds of classes that are being offered. One of the other adds that's not on the list yet, it's in the other part of the budget, was trying, this is really board, was we were wanting to add outdoor school for sixth graders, some kind of hands-on maker space experience for seventh graders that would be comparable to the outdoor week experience, but you get to go do something that's another hands-on thing in seventh grade. And then eighth grade, getting to do, you know, college site visit or a career, you know, some kind of a site visit. That's in part two of the budget. That one's loosely.
That's the state, we're not what you.
If we get up to the seven point five, that's one of the adds that's on the table.
I, I vote for that.
Yeah, yeah, we want. Or I could go back and do the, when I'm going back and say, I wanna take reserves down lower to the board. It could be one of the ones I pop in there.
So what does the, then the college or career readiness part that was in there, that the electives for the K eights, what, what does that include?
So Avid is one of those, which is advancement via individual determination. And actually, Paige, I'm gonna let you explain this because you guys have been on the premier Avid schools. You wanna explain what Avid is?
Basically, it's, it's a program that's sort of twofold. There are elective classes for students who are generally first-generation college students. Help students with college and career readiness, organizational skills, getting, you know, college applications, essays, how to be successful not only in high school, but beyond high school. And then there is a whole host of educational instructional strategies that are intended to be used school-wide that, you know, support students throughout all different content areas.
And so part of the idea is, and a couple clusters we've been building, we've started at the high school and built it back into the middle school and actually in Roosevelt, even back into the elementary school. Because you're starting to build a common language for the staff too and common, you know, how do you structure things for kids to study and build study habits, those kinds of things. So that's, for the schools that are adding that. The high schools have been also working on a college career readiness class for ninth graders.
Yeah, there was a curriculum piloted, I think, at Franklin and Roosevelt, maybe? And from what I understand, the folks who are piloting that are going to be looking at which curriculum they prefer and those, that class will be implemented on freshmen in all high schools next year.
And that was around things like exploration and FAFSA and just kind of getting you on that trajectory.
But wasn't the, but it was K eights that you were adding that?
So Avid, we've got three, or, actually, I'm gonna say six middle schools that are doing adding, looking at adding Avid. So it would be, we'd be asking them to use that additional FTE to add Avid. If you don't have arts, we're asking you to do art. And if you, then it would be more like CTE, something that's career exploration, something that's kind of getting kids thinking in the middle grades about what are you doing next? What's the why of why you're in school?
Because I guess I recognize and appreciate that as an IB school, our school gets a number of things that at other schools might be considered electives. But, you know, as evidenced by the Willamette Week article, there is a large perception across the district that somebody else is getting something elective-wise that somebody else isn't getting. And I'm not specifically, you know, it's not just at my school and, you know, I'm talking very generally. But it, a lot of times, it feels like the electives are sort of homemade. Or it sounds, I don't have a middle schooler yet, but I will next year. And so it just, I, I'm encouraged to hear that there might be more, you know, whether it's CTE or whatever it is, I'd like to see more of that. Because sometimes the elective is, it's not what I remember electives being. And I went to a very small.
And that gets back to the middle school K eight piece. I mean, it's the chicken and the egg thing with the K eights. And one of the things that the previous superintendent didn't plan for when she moved to the K eights is that you have to have that critical mass of kids to be able to provide.
But even, I mean, I went to the middle school information nights, not only at my own school, but at several schools, just to see what it was like. And I went to some sixth, eighth, or sixth or eighth grade. And I was, I actually felt pretty good that there was nothing I was missing at my school that another school had across the board, the electives kind of.
It's slim. It's really slim. I mean, and you've got the same, yeah. I mean, our middle grades have been tiny, at the K eights, and most of them have been tiny with a small group of people teaching everything. And if, if the measure of the success is the breadth of electives, the middle schools are always gonna have more because there are big numbers of kids.
And that's okay with me.
Well, see, and see, this is part of the deal, is at this point, we have people who are totally appreciating, what do you get in a K eight? And it's a lot of relationship with, in your family's relationship to a school over a, you know, a broader number of years. Family engagement way higher because you've got the older, you've just got a whole different set of things that people value about the K eights than what they value about the middle grade, middle schools, which is probably why I don't think we go to one or the other. But if the measure is always the breadth of elective and that's the pass fail, our K eights are never gonna get there with small numbers of, you know, middle grades. So, so yes, we wanna keep beefing it up and we need, the other thing is having scarce resource so that we aren't able to then, you know, supplement and say, okay, you're small, but here we can give you a bunch of extra FTE so you can add a bunch of other stuff. We haven't been in that position either. So it's been the trifecta.
So just getting off of that, my, we, we go to Jason Lee. We're, I think our middle school grades are like in the thirties, thirty-some kids in each one. So she went to the middle, we've been scrambling to get, we've got a fifth grader, we've been scrambling to get him into a bigger school for middle school. And my wife went to the middle school information at Roseway and she came home just sick to her stomach with the disparity that they have. They've got a full band room, our mu, we have music class on the stage, it's, everything else is going on and so you never really concentrate on it. Our art class is in the library. We have a, we don't have technology room anymore.
And we do, yeah.
But it's, yeah, and it's, so with another half, yeah, with another half the elective, whatever, I don't know where they put it.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's not, so it's not just the staffing, it's the building too.
It's the building. This is part of our conundrum.
So what can be done in the near term outside the, I don't, I don't know how long the boundary review is, but I think it might have been good.
This is why, but this is why, when I say we're adding elective capacity now, and I get, we're adding elective people to do electives right now. And we're trying to address some of the overcrowding, undercrowding issues in the immediate.
The bond, the bond, we were able to have science labs where they worked because that was another piece, you know? We had these K eights that didn't have a decent science lab. So that's just.
That's a piece, but I know Jason Lee's.
That's one piece, but it doesn't get to the band room piece and.
And it won't. And again, this is where you got buildings that were designed as K fives and ones that were designed as middle schools, really different capacity, what kind of.
Which again, was the lack of planning that went into the previous superintendent's.
I know.
Can we prioritize transfers for students and smaller, can we prioritize transfers?
Then you get into that vicious cycle where there's no, you know, the fewer kids, the less we can offer, even if there is the facility. And then the less program, the fewer kids want to go there. So, I mean, we're trying, I think Carol's really, in, in adding these pieces at the sixth or eighth grade, she's really, I mean, we're trying to say, you know, hang in there and then let's, let's build that capacity. But knowing that it's still, you know, when you don't have a band room and the, the K eight or the, or the middle school twenty blocks away does, that that's, you know, it's really not an acceptable, say, at first. But I don't know in the near term that we're gonna be able to fix that piece. But certainly, if we can get, if we can get some of these additional, some additional staffing in, that will at least will help so that we at least have the capacity to offer it.
Couple things, just one of the tragedies, I think, that may happen for, at Madison, hoping, hoping not, but Roseway is a great K eight, one of the strongest for Madison. And it may end up turning back into the middle school for Madison. So that would be, will be sad if it happens because it's been very successful. Yeah.
It's the only.
The only K eight. Right, for Madison. So it would be, it would be gaining a middle school.
Harrison Park is a friendly K.
Although they may.
They're way down there.
Although if the population bubble moves up, they may be, Marshall reopens eventually.
They may not be, right. But at the moment, they have strong, they have a lot of kids in strong program from what I can tell.
I just wish that the Roseway, it could have been. See, this is not gonna be a no-brainer conversation. This is what's so crazy is you kind of think, you can even get a little way down a trail of thinking, you kind of have a solution that makes sense and then you're like, oh, God, yeah, a few more factors and it's so is complex.
I have a fifth grader and she's currently in a private school, the Little Miss Harvick School District. And I don't think I'll put her in a middle school. She's a musician and that is very important to me, she's in Harrison Park. And I don't see this part in. But I do know that Mr. Owens brings seventh and eighth graders from Roseway Heights here. And I think there is a class offered during the day for them as far as band goes.
Yeah, there's not a class for them. But. No, they can come and join the high school class. Because they're close enough to do it.
I know, and that's what I'm thinking. Could that be a solution to other middle schools that don't have an option?
If transportation becomes an option and we get a little support to do it because that, you know, if all the schools and the feeder pattern were doing that, we would not have the FTE to handle that.
So, oh, yeah, but you know what? So if a cluster came up with a creative solution like that, that you're saying, here's how we would wanna solve something and you could give us a proposed something, I mean, it's a, it's good kind of creative.
Right. Sure.
So just a check, we have fifteen minutes left and there's folks.
Yeah, people who have not asked questions yet will give you, I'm just looking to see if anybody else who didn't just ask the last question. So anybody else back? Yes.
I may have missed this in the very beginning, but I wasn't here, but with all the turmoil in Salem, where does your budget assumption, how do you see that playing out politically in this, in the legislature?
So this is part of what I did at the beginning, but I'll do a short version of it, which is we are advocating for seven point five billion from the legislature, which lets us hold current service and do full decay. The co-chair budget right now is the one that's in play, which is seven point two, three, five billion over the biennium. And they're hard and fast, like really saying, we're gonna move this one fast and try and get, because they've done, it's part of the overall budget framework, that this is what they've named for education and they wanna move it fast, get it decided fast and take it off the table. take it off the table, we've said, we would rather have enough money rather than a fast decision on the budget, right, so like that's the dialogue right now, for Portland, what the seven point two three five means is like a hundred and twenty dollars, more than a hundred and twenty dollars less per kid next year than we have in the current biennium, and it means thirteen million dollars short of being able to keep our current service levels and implement full decay, so that's a, it's a real thing, but our difference is we have a local option, which had the three things, three things that means we generated more this year than we did in the previous biennium, because we, it had money we recovered from open renewal, that was previously being diverted, assessed values have gone up, and we don't have compression, so we have like ten million dollars that I just went through and told, so there's staffing that we'll get to do either way, so this is part of where we're, like, as other districts are cutting days, cutting staff, hang on, let me just finish, I'll put to you, cutting days and cutting staff, we'll be able to be in the position of saying, this plan, we're already implementing it, so it's a staffing add, but there's a bunch of stuff that is sort of assist to kids that will go away, like, like grants that we can't backfill, and those kinds of things, so, but we're going full blast, even if they pass seven point two three five, we will keep advocating for the seven five, and I'll do a budget in, at the end of March that we propose, that will be on the, whatever, the one that I know we can do, and we'll keep going, and if we get to add later, we'll add later.
Can I just add the plug, really, which is sort of the board meeting, but just, it's so important for you all as constituents to contact your representatives or senators, we go down and we talk ourselves horse, and, and you know, that, that's one thing, and we're doing our best, but it's you all as the voters that they really listen to and care about.
And it totally is, I mean, that's, those are the voices that matter.
Yeah, even our Portland delegation is telling us, oh yeah, you know, seven point two is a good number, no, it's not.
It's not a good number.
It's not for our, our, you know, sister districts around the state, so I'll just put that flag in, I'm hoping we can work.
And parent day advocacy.
Is there a lobby day?
Yeah, there, so do the lobby days.
Friday, April third, we're paying for a bus, the board, school board is funding a bus for parents who want to go down to Salem and meet with legislators, lunches provided, our special guest that we have confirmed is House Education Committee Chair. Margaret Doherty, so she's going to meet with all the parents who come, we have room for fifty parents, but actually we have thirty-eight, we have twelve signed up, so we have thirty-eight spots left, and then we're also in the next couple of weeks going to be providing tools to people who can't go, because I know, we know most people can't take a day off work or whatever and go down to Salem, so, we're going to be sending out phone lists and sample letters that you can write to your legislators.
And it totally matters, I'm just going to say.
Way more than us.
Yeah, so, Betsy Soltzer.
So, does the seven point two three five figure take into account the stealth increased instructional time requirements that were passed in January?
Yeah, it happens still.
So, I mean, that concerns me, that, you know, people aren't aware of it, because it happened over Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Well, and it's one, like, those, those new instructional time rules that have an impact on us in terms of like, how, a percent, how many hours we provide instruction, both per class and overall, and they increase every year over the next four years.
Is there a cheat sheet on what that will look like, a K five, K eight?
Yes, there is, there's like a whole grid and a whole implementation plan that I don't, I don't know if we have it up on our website, ODE, it's an OA, so it's a rule, an ODE rule.
I tried to read the OAR, and I didn't.
Yeah, it's not a cheat sheet, what does it mean?
What does it mean for my kids, like, are they going to not go on field trips, what does it mean?
Our website is bad, try ODEs.
Yeah, because they, part of what this does too, and we're in the process of doing the, just like, picking apart what it actually means for us in terms of our schedules, and what counts as instructional time, what doesn't, like, it's all things about where assemblies that are not instructional in nature no longer count as instructional time, so.
Like recess.
You can't do Rose Festival, you can't, you know, like, what, it's all, it's like that kind of stuff, so we have to go through and figure out what is it that we're giving as guidance to principals about what you can't do.
You're still figuring out what.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, everybody will end up with, and yes, it's a right, that's a right question, and no, there, there's not any, like, wouldn't the hundred and twenty dollars less per kid than what we get this year? And increase, and this has been the pattern, increased expectation, less money.
More mandates.
More mandates, less money, so, okay, any other, like, questions before I come back to Michelle? Oh, you're first, then Michelle, Michelle's got.
So besides the eight grade specialists that are certified staff.
Yeah.
Any other, like, in the, if we get more money, certified staff added K five, I have a kid who's in a class of twenty-nine, and I'd rather just class be much smaller.
So there's not at the moment, because what the, like, the seven point five gives us another like eight million dollars to work with, where we did the other list of stuff that I kind of ran through in terms of CTE, and so, I mean, you can, you can put other things on the list that you're concerned about that you'd want on the list.
Class size, yeah, for K five.
And that's a big add in order to actually get down where it really impacts class size.
And then affects facilities.
Yeah, but, so, but, well, we'll put it down as a thing that we're interested in doing, for us, for how large we are, in order to have something that truly impacts class size, you're typing large numbers of people to get where you really feel the difference, even adding a single other person to your building, individual teachers don't feel the impact on the class size.
The difference was from twenty-four to twenty-nine.
Makes a difference, well, and the EA thing is the other one, that like our other one, where we totally decimated how many, like, EAs and paraprofessionals in our system over a number of years, along with whatever, chopped athletics, chopped arts, chopped, I mean, so much has been chopped, but educational assistance is the other ability to give more individualized attention, which we're trying to add that back to, so that's the other way we're trying to get, how do teachers have the capacity to give more, one-on-one time to kids, yeah.
Oh, it's okay.
Go ahead.
I'll pass.
Okay.
Oh boy, I have so many things, so, I, I'm going to try and just finish up the, the middle school thing with, I'm trying to get a concrete idea, did you say it was a half FTE that you're giving to?
To K eights.
K eights for the middle grades only.
It's, it's not for the middle grades, it's for the middle grades.
They have to use it for grade six through eight for an elective.
For an elective. Middle schools get a point two, K eights get a point five, middle schools have got way more robust electives.
Could that elective be Avid, or could, so could, so there's no, like, guarantee for more arts or equitable programming in terms of type, just quantity?
There's different variation.
But every K eight gets it.
Every K eight gets the point five, if you, there are like maybe seven or eight K eights that really have no art offering, if you're one of those.
The sixth grade grades.
In the sixth grade grade, they've got a K five.
Then you get more.
No, okay, everybody's getting point five, we didn't say only those eight who have, don't have art, we're giving you a point five, everybody else gets nothing, we said, every K eight gets point five, if you don't have art right now in your middle grades, please add art.
Okay.
If you're, and those are different than the ones who are, we're saying, okay, if you're adding Avid, here's, use that extra FTE to add Avid, otherwise you've got some discretion about what you do.
So at DEBRAC, at the beginning of the process, the, the committee said, we don't want to deal with anything having to do for next year implementation, and we were given some sort of verbal assurance that the schools that we were concerned about that were mostly under-enrolled in the middle grades would have, that problem would be dealt with, with the upcoming budget, and so, that there would be some sort of targeted way to deal with the schools that we were feeling like we're being left out of the, 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 that, yeah, that, that we felt that trying to deal with the over-enrolled schools first wasn't really great, that we wanted to do the whole district, but that left some under-enrolled schools, specifically under-enrolled in grade six, seven, eight, and I was under the impression that those schools would get some sort of help for this year before the enrollment balancing happens, and this doesn't sound like that.
But it, because it is, so the couple things that we were trying, giving to DEBRAC were, we had some ones that were acute overcrowding issues, that was a right call, it was right to offer them to DEBRAC to give us some, you know, the question was, are these boundaries solved with boundary kind of solutions, and DEBRAC gave it back and said, we want to focus on long-term, not short-term solutions, which is right, because we want DEBRAC doing a framework and a, you know, kind of policy level, but framework level, how do we, and values-driven, how do you make these decisions, not get in the weeds?
Right.
And we would have put you in the weeds right out of the chute, so you gave it back to us, we went through and did the, here are the overcrowdings, here's where we're doing portables, here's where we're going to amend spaces, here's where we're using one-time money to adjust so that we can keep going and not do short-term boundary fixes, not take people through big-time change to do short-term fixes, so then we did that, or we've done, we went through and did that, and then second, if we've got, and then we did the ads for all the K eights, but if in fact you are somebody who can't offer the core program, you come back and you ask for one of the non-formular FTE, so that's the whole point of that category, what we look at first is you're, you've got some, your formula doesn't get you to be able to offer the core program, we're going to, you work with your senior director, and you get the additional FTE you need to offer the core program, and different, like, you may have lost enrollment, and you lost it all in one grade, and so it chopped off a fifth grade class, contrasted with another school that lost the same number of kids this year, but they were like two kids per grade level, and so it's just a mess in terms of what do you do, we need to give you another FTE in order to be able to solve it, so, I mean, it's like totally individual, and we don't try and solve that by formula, if we do the, what's.
Do it.
Yeah, we do it one by one, because they're really unique, what's the, what's the issue, and what are you short by, you know, who's in what grade level, you know, whatever, who are your staff, what can they offer?
It seems to me like you might want to increase the set of sides for the balancing FTE, but based on unknown enrollment and transfer.
Can you keep that set aside?
But it's the same sort of total numbers last year, I just.
We add the little.
You did, that seems like it's a good idea.
Yeah. Betsy.
So we have the recent ruling on the high school schedule arbitration, and I guess I'm just wondering, I'm a new high school parent, and I have been not real happy with the, I think, four-minute passing periods, and twenty-minute lunch, and, you know, the whole instructional minute counter thing is crazy to me, anyways, I'm just wondering if, you probably haven't had much time to really think about how the ruling is going to affect the budget, but, so, to the extent you have thoughts.
So, a couple things are going to, we're looking at what's the high school schedule going to be, high school principals did some conversation about it this morning, we're PATs doing conversation about it, we've just did a conversation with Super SAC, where we listened to students talk about it, the state adjusted, so this year we were the only district in the state that was held to a one-hundred-and-thirty-hour-per-class ruling that's been on the books forever, but which the state hasn't funded our ability to do forever, we got a parent complaint, so we were held to that, and we've been monitoring it, and been way compliance-driven all year, so we have every high school in a minute tracking, so we are in compliance by the end of the year, which meant we've had ridiculous passing times, and ridiculous sized lunches, and ridiculous rules around what you can't, you know, so I'm so sorry I've been this blunt about it, but it's been a really rough year in terms of, and the rule then was subsequently, like, done away with, so it doesn't apply to anybody else, it no longer exists, and it won't apply next year, so it's allowing us a little more flexibility to look at what the schedule will be next year, we're looking at, you know, talking to students, we're talking to teachers, we're talking to principals about what's the, you know, what's the schedule going to be that still has right instructional time, but has decent passing periods, that has the flex time that people are looking for, so anyway, that, people are working on.
What is the state's response to the fact that they haven't funded their own rule?
There are many things that are mandates that are, don't have dollars that are attached to them.
Quality education models in the constitution, they don't do it.
We're two billion dollars short of that.
Isn't it?
And the option is if we don't meet it, they write a report, right, they write a report.
We need like the reverse of the kicker law, where if you don't meet that, then you have to like.
Yeah, if the state doesn't fund their own mandates, wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, PE is coming.
So anyway, sorry, you got a very blunt answer on the one-thirty, you're saying, but I'm going to say, high schools have just worked diligently, and really matter-of-factly, and students have, everybody's been really matter-of-fact about this is what we're doing this year, and we're working at changing it next year, so.
I want to do what I can as a parent to help with the budget that's safe.
Awesome.
I think it would be helpful if we could all speak with one voice.
Yeah.
On what, the goal, and so, can we get some talking points?
And that's what John is saying, we're going to get.
We're going to start getting in our district-wide key glasses, you're not getting them?
Okay, no, I, okay, I'm probably getting them, but I.
And we did, so at the beginning, we showed a chart that we've done across all of the, like, POSA, the administrators, the teachers, the school board members, PTA, we've done one chart that visually shows, here's what ends up being the current budget, the seven point two three five, you'll have this kind of an impact, here's the seven point five, which is, here's seven point eight to change investment, but we're using that as our simple visual and talking point for everybody, and we try to get the hundred and ninety-seven districts to what are our numbers that can be relate for everybody, give or take a little, so that we can talk with one voice exactly, and all the advocacy groups, so that we're not all down there pitching different stuff.
Right.
And where we have to tell an individual story, but we're still going for the same numbers, so, like, we've been really working, and then, yeah, John's our point on getting talking points, and great, like, come if you can on advocacy day, it would be awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we do, our, our, our representative, our delegation from Portland is really receptive to meeting with us when we're down there too, so.
We're a key voice in the debate.
Yeah.
We have, we have a delegation who will listen to what you have to say.
Okay, now, I'm going to say, we have some Madison students here who I would like to introduce themselves, and you guys have any words for us, since you're coming and joining us?
Who can introduce themselves, though?
I'm Max Tuttle, I'm a senior.
I'm Zane Weber, I'm a junior.
Tell everyone what you serve on.
I'm also a student body president, and I'm on DEBRAC.
Was DEBRAC you have deserved?
DEBRAC is the district, there's no W, district-wide boundary assessment committee.
And superintendent student advisory committee.
I'm, yeah.
Thanks for coming in. Any other words of wisdom for us?
Change the schedule.
Yeah. Yeah. Giving your feedback.
I give plenty of feedback.
She knows, I know. You guys, thank you so much for coming tonight and being part of this, I really appreciate it.